Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 1st at 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I would like to, we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to do our executive session items first, and then we will move on to the budget. So I would like to request a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I think I have Mr. Ross followed by Mr. Reynolds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, we are now in executive session. Thank you. Welcome back, and I would like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I made the motion, he so moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We're out of executive session. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Lawrence Mordarsky effective June 30th, 2020. Lawrence has been a mathematics and physics teacher since August of 1998 for a total of 24 years of service in Wallingford Public Schools. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ross seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. I also would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Nicholas Solano effective June 30th, 2022. Nicholas has been a middle school English teacher since August of 2016. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ross seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. Onto item number five. I would like to make a motion to permit the business manager to be paid for unused vacation time due to the extreme demands of the COVID-19 pandemic. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we are up to item number six on our agenda, the discussion and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Board of Ed budget in the amount of $109,897,692. And I will turn that over to Superintendent Belizzi and Mr. Barone. Mr. Barone, do you want to start us off, and then I'll chime in, sorry?
Sure. Good evening. Is this working?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So we, you know, we've come back to basically our budget. The amount allocated equaled our sustained service request, which reflected a 2.8% increase. And so our budget next year will be $109,897,692. I guess what we have to do now is approve it at the object level, which is the three-digit number we use. And so what I believe we provided was that was the initial sustained service request is what was provided in that packet for the meeting tonight. That was initially, that's how we requested it. And I guess the thought is, is that, you know, is that what we want to adopt, or do we need to reallocate resources? I mean, the bottom line can't change, but the allocation between accounts can.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. So I agree with what he said. We have been given the amount, which is our full sustained, based on what we approved initially. Some of the things that I had looked at, and we looked at as a team here, is the possibility of taking a look at our contingency budget and reviewing whether or not we would like to leave it as to where it is right now at the $499,000, or did we want to look at lowering that? One of the items that is in the budget, the contingency section there, is $198,000 for the adult ed move. We had put that money in there to hold that there. Since we started this, some things have changed in terms of timing. So to date, I have found that in talking with the mayor and looking at different possibilities for the adult ed move, because we know that the train station is something that the town would like back, it's a town-owned building, and they'd like to renovate it and use the space for something else. The timelines have changed a little bit. So it looks like right now the police station is an option for us. We've been given approval to be able to add that to our all-school study as a viable option for both adult ed and central office. Adult ed right now would probably not have to vacate if things go through on their end at the town side until December of 2023, which is a little later than what we had originally thought. After speaking with the police chief, they are looking at a potential move of late fall of 2023. So the police station would be available late fall 2023. Adult ed would have to move approximately December of 2023. The lease here that we currently have, we are able to break the lease if we are moving to a town-owned building, which is what the police station is, and we would have that ability to do that of April 2024. So there is some time, you know, there's a little bit of a gap there, but the alignment of things is not that far off, if that is something that we wanted to do. All that being said, I think the $198,000 that we have right now in contingency is probably something that we will not need to maintain there, and maybe can potentially consider some of the other items on our strategic plan that we prioritized that are not going to be funded, because then none of our strategic items will be able to be funded. We are just at our full sustained current.
Mrs. Castelli.
Let me just, this is on, okay. So, a couple of things I have concerns about with respect to lowering the contingency, and that has to do with the rise in fuel costs, which we have not settled on for our oil, our oil consumption. We don't know what those costs are going to be. And I was thinking that contingency would help us handle any of those additional expenses. Additionally, there's the bus fuel, which we're paying in excess of $5 a gallon, and right now diesel is at $6.50 or plus. So we have, I don't know, I have no idea how much that, does anybody know how much that could potentially be? So again, contingency could help us with that. And food services, if the government does not extend free lunches and breakfasts for next year, we have the potential that they're going to go into the red, and we need to have funds to help them get back in the black. Again, that's what contingency is supposed to be used for, those kinds of issues. So at this point, I'm kind of very nervous about moving any money out of contingency. That's just what I wanted to say.
Any other comments?
Might you speak about the food service? What happened in the last meeting?
Yeah, I mean, Mrs. Roscoe, did you want to share what the, I know you attended a strategic meeting for food service, and I know they're planning for next year?
I did. So, Mrs. Castelli, I shared those same remarks at our, at our meeting, and I think everyone is concerned just not knowing where the inflationary food costs are going to go and how to cover those. So one of the things that they talked about was really looking at what the increase will be allowed to be, to try to make sure that there's enough of a, I don't want to call it cushion, but enough of a cushion to make sure that they stay out of the red, or, you know, stay in the black and not dipping into the red where they're needing assistance from the board. Just, I was vocal that we obviously don't have a lot of funds in excess to just be able to always make them whole, and so that was something that they're readily aware of. And I know that at our, one of our upcoming meetings, they're supposed to be presenting a couple of different scenarios based on some of the information that are sort of still a question mark. So hopefully food service, but I fully understand where you're coming from, but hopefully food service will be able to, fingers crossed, sustain itself, but I, I fully understand, yeah.
Mrs. Regan.
So if, it's not, it's my understanding, or I think according to the last food service, they are still in the black, correct?
Significantly in the black.
So, and I think we had talked about not touching that because of this. So I, I feel a little better about food service, knowing that there's probably still going to be an issue, but I think in short term, we've, I don't think we're going to take away from them based on where they are right now. I do worry about fuel prices, and we also had talked about, we tabled from the last operations meeting, the additional tuitions for the art program. And so I would say if we could use some of those funds for that, because we already know that there was a desire to maybe to increase those, that we, and I think, I don't know that we have to earmark, earmark it for those, or could we leave those in contingency to pay for those, those extra tuition?
Would we move it to the special education line?
Right.
Object code? Because that's where the other ones would be coming from.
Correct. We'd have to move those. We'd have to move that money for that, to that special education code, because that is where it's going to come out of.
How, how many slots are we talking about adding?
So I think that's where we were up for discussion, because I've already added the four.
Okay.
And I can pass this, if we just want to pass this down, I can pass, I kind of just updated what we had before when we talked about ECA. And I know there was a question for Mr. Deering about how many have gone on to, you know, higher education after high school, and from both high schools, it's been one on either side. They haven't really kept track of it in previous years, but they know that this current school year, when they graduated last year, it was one and one. So right now, we added the four, so that was an additional $23,628. The paper that's coming around to all of you now, the top part is what I've shared with you earlier, previously, over the past five years, how many are returning students, how many have applied. Again, you can see the numbers going up in that top chart. The second box that I added was the acceptance breakdown. I know there was also a question about what it will look like. So for this coming school year, this will be how many students will be in the, in the program for ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th and 12th. So you can see ninth and 10th grade have five students each year. 11th grade, there are currently three, and 12th grade, there are currently three. So the following 23, 24, you know that there will be three slots already open, because those students will have graduated minimally. I don't know if it's something to consider that we leave it where it is at the five right now, and next year, we consider adding two additional slots, maybe making it five, five and five, you know, so we get to five potential openings. Again, it's never going to be neat and pretty, because they can come in at different times. So they may not always start at the ninth grade and stay for all four years. They may come in as a junior, they may only do it for one year, so that's going to add a little bit of variance, which could be why we've seen it like this over the years. Again, something to consider, but my recommendation would be that maybe we consider adding two more next year, that, you know, the following.
So are we at four, do we add four, or did we add five? I thought we added five this year.
Four, to make sure that we could add the five. We already had one slot open. This particular year, there would have one, have only been one available slot.
Oh, okay. All right, now I see.
So we have the $23,000, it's already in the budget, correct? For the four additional? It's not?
No, it's not.
So that's what Donna was talking about?
Correct.
Take, so we could take the $23,000 out of the one, of the
Of the contingency.
499, and then spend the $23,000 and get those four extra spots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions.
Sure.
Well, you all know how I feel about contingency. I like that to be a nice chunk, because you never know, you can't foresee what's going to happen with anything. Dominic, you said, I know they're in the black, food services, can you tell me off the top of your head how much maybe?
Eight hundred.
I can't remember.
Eight hundred to 900?
Right through April, they were at 640, 640 positive on the cash flow, and, you know.
640,000?
Thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there, I mean, I guess to put it in the context, when I started four or five years ago, I think they had about 160,000 cash, 150,000. So they'll start off the year with
They had what?
150,000 in cash when we started probably five years ago. They're going to have well over half a million, I would say, to start in September. So I, I mean, I think that next year, they're going to, they're, you know, pretty much, they're going to be in pretty good shape. Now, I guess if we close down like we did the first year, when we closed for several months, that's a different story, but, you know, it seems like they, they built a nice cushion that, that can, you know, if, if they have a little bit of a bad, you know, a bad year, they can absorb it.
Now, Dominic, I don't remember that, it's kind of a surplus, 150.
No, no, cash.
They were always in the, they were always in the red.
That, I'm, I'm sorry, I said cash, and, and they were in the red, and that's what, when I got here, it was at 120, and it went down to about 50, okay? And then, and then we, you know, then COVID hit, and we put the money in to keep them where they were, and, and now they're, you know, now they're making, you know, like I said, they've got over 600,000 surplus right now, or cash. So you're correct. Since I've been here, I believe they've, they've lost between any, you know, 20 to 30,000, and one year, I think it was maybe 10 to 15, but, you know.
They've had significant losses.
But prior to that, there were some very large losses.
Very large. And I just want to
They also had that bank, they had that, they had a contingency, but we drained that.
That, that's, that has about 40 grand in it, 50 grand right now, I believe, 40 to 50 grand.
Yeah, I thought there was more.
Yeah, yeah. That was, it was, it was a CD when they were getting interest on it, and then, yeah, but I believe it's around 40 grand.
And just to remind everybody, Wallingford is one of the last districts in the state to do breakfast in the elementary schools. And the reason that we were last is every time we did a price analysis on it, it would have cost the district money. We could not even do it and break even. And at the time, food service was already losing money, or eating into what they had for an old surplus or contingency, or however you want to look at it. To bring on a service that we knew was going to cost more money, just wasn't fiscally responsible, so we kept putting off breakfast. Doing it this year, when we're getting federally reimbursed for it, it's kind of a windfall for us, because it's a safety net. We're not at risk of losing anything, because we're getting fully reimbursed. So we cannot go back to a period when we're not getting reimbursed by the federal government and anticipate to even be where we were before. We know we're going to be farther behind, because we're going to have to be absorbing losses from breakfast that we've never had before. So that 600 plus whatever's in contingency and cash and everything else, we have to expect that they're going to start needing that next year. Mrs. Castelli, then Mr. Vado.
So Dominic, I don't know if you would have this information readily available, but I would assume that some maintenance items that are the responsibility of food services of their, from their budget, have probably been pushed to a back burner when, you know, because the funds weren't there. So I'm assuming some of this 640,000 is going to help them do some of that maintenance stuff that needs to get done. Would that be a true statement?
It could be true. We've also set aside some money in the 2% fund for them for different, and maybe not so much maintenance, but replacing a few things. So I think we, we did set some money aside for different items, you know, I want to say, items that were like $3,000 to $4,000, pieces of equipment that, that were, that were failing, so, you know, so they were going to get replaced. We have not purchased them yet, but we do have some money in 2% to, to, to replace those items. And I think from a maintenance perspective, I think kind of that's what you're, you're really referring to, is replacing things, not so much repairing them yet.
I know there's certain things that have, can't come out of, or shouldn't be coming out of the, help me out with this, Tammy, you know this better.
Yes, so in the past, the board is even
It doesn't come out of food services, it has to come out of our
Right. Even for like the fixed assets, or replacement of a refrigerator that dies, or a replacement of an oven that dies. Even if they had paid for it, the board transferred and covered that expense, because that's not a normal operating expense for them to revenue its expenses, break even. So we have, in the past, Dominic, the board has said, okay, like, tell us anything that's a maintenance expense over $5,000, how many things were in there, and then we made a transfer to cover those unusually high maintenance expenses.
Correct. And we, we've also, though, allocated money, they have money allocated outside of anything we're talking about, into 2% fund for certain things.
For some of their strategic items.
For some strategic items and items that, you know, that they deemed they needed.
Yep. Plus, they got a small grant for equipment.
Correct.
The other thing we have to keep in mind is, we have got to replace that field at Sheehan. It's a disgrace, I'm sorry. It's really bad. I was there a couple of weekends ago to see it firsthand, and I had, I was blown away by how bad it is. So again, if the food services can be self-sufficient with the 640,000, some contingency funds could be put toward helping with that field. I don't know, that, that, it's high on my priority list, let's just put it that way.
Mr. Vado.
All right, so we could transfer funds from contingency to any other place where we see need as the year progresses. Okay, I got that. We, we don't need the 198 right now in this year's budget, because it won't happen until the next year, 23, 24, when we start doing what we have to do. Okay, got that. I, I, I got to be honest, I forgot all the things that were prioritized on the strategic plan. However, I, I'm going to ignore that list myself.
It's coming around.
Well, I'll, I'll look at it.
Just so you have it, it's coming around.
I'll show you the respect, Madam Superintendent, I will look at it. However
Then you can ignore it.
Then I can disregard it. I am really, I'm, I'm really concerned about safety in our schools. And I, if I had to take a dime to do something to make our schools more safe, I'd like to do it. So if we're going to take any money out of contingency, I like to see it done for some kind of safety reason in our schools. Now, you can give it to me. I won't throw it back.
I'm sorry. I was trying not to interrupt you.
Um, well, you're sitting up open. I, I probably, for my own satisfaction, we'd need an update again from Mark on what he has going on. I know he is doing certain things, I know he's pricing out things, the vestibules and whatnot, but I would really like to sit down and have a talk with him personally, or maybe have him come to the board if I tell him what I'm looking for. But I, I just feel in my heart of hearts that if we're going to spend any extra money outside of the sustained budget, it should be for some type of safety in our schools. We know what just happened, we know we do, we have done a lot, I don't want the public to think we haven't, we've done an awful lot whenever we could, but I think there's never enough. And if, if we need the extra money to do that, then I think we could take some of that money out of contingency, that 200,000 that we put aside for adult ed. Although, I still like the 500,000 in there, I got to tell you, you know, I do like that. But that's, that's my feeling, I'm really concerned about that. So I would like to get, hear from Mark again about what he is doing, what he's got planned, what funds he's going to need, and maybe suggest other things. I'm, I'm going to do my homework and find out what are the things we could do on maybe a smaller basis, but at least start someplace else. I know I brought up the metal detectors, and I was, you know, everything, I heard all the negatives to that, I'm still not convinced, at least it's something. But in any case, I, that's how I feel. I, I don't want to spend the money on anything myself, other than safety.
Okay, so if I can just speak to
Now I look at your plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you didn't throw it at me. So if I can just speak a little bit to the vestibules that you were referencing. So we did meet as a central office team, and Mr. Deptula has already submitted, at the end of the day last Thursday, to the town, three additional bids to finish the vestibules at many of our schools. So Sheehan, Dag Hamishall, Moran, Cook Hill, Highland, Moses White Beach, Parker Farms, Pond Hill, Rock Hill Stevens. We do have some of that money already in the 2% budget, Mr. Barone, just correct me if I'm wrong, and we have that estimated already set aside to finish those vestibules. We're waiting on the glass, so he had to go back and bid that back out, because we did not have any viable bids to finish those. We also have received grant money, security grant money that we have applied for, to cover this.
You got that money?
Yes. So it is out there already, so we're going to wait for the town now to put it out, but we have to, he did put out three separate bids, so it is a priority for us to finish all of those at the schools, so that they are up and ready.
So we have no idea what the cost is yet?
We don't, we have an estimate, but, you know, I'm going to anticipate, just based on everything else going up, that what we have even as an estimate may be higher. We did talk about that again this morning at central office, and I believe he, you know, Mark is anticipating, or Mr. Deptula is anticipating, that it's going to be higher than what he's estimated.
You, you said Pond Hill, Rock Hill, Stevens, what was the other one?
Sheehan.
It's shorter to just say the two that are done.
Right. So Lyman Hall, Fritz, and central office are done. So how about I go that way? Lyman Hall, Fritz, central office are done.
Now with Sheehan, here's, you know how, when you go in those, when you first go in those doors, if you go up the stairs, there's another set of doors, correct? To get into the main, the part of the building. If you go down the steps, I can't remember if there are doors.
There's doors.
So wouldn't those, that stairwell act as a vestibule?
But Mike, what they're talking about, there's, yes, but there's more, there's more to it than just, it's not just the two double set of doors.
Whatever they put in between the glass and stuff like that.
The ability to seclude the entrance to one door, in and out.
That's what's got to be completed.
And there, there's no vestibule in the back entrance where all the students come in. There's no vestibule at all back there. So that's got to be built from scratch.
Is that true? They're all coming in the back?
Yeah, that's where the student parking lot is.
Oh, that's right, the other back thing, all right. That's a lot of windows. Okay. Thank you for that information. So we're waiting to hear then about how much money they granted, how much, we don't know what the bids are going to be.
Right, I have to wait.
So it's still up in the air, and we do have it on the to-do list.
We do, absolutely.
Well, that's
It's on the to-do list, and so again, it's varying what has to be done at each school, so there's an estimate at each school, and the amount is different for each school. But again, talking with Mr. Deptula, he does think that what he's estimated, it's going to change. He did have people that were going to do some of this work, and the bids were not honored. Am I correct, Mr. Barone? Or they couldn't get the materials?
The, the glass, the glass vendor that was under bid was not honoring the bid anymore, so we couldn't move forward. Because we, certain things, we, we have vendors that we bid out just services versus projects, and we had a glass vendor, and they're no longer honoring that bid, so we don't have a glass vendor right now.
I would really like to know what the cost is for that glass, that special stuff that they put over. But anyway, is there any, do we have any placeholders in our budget for any of this work? No, right? In other words, we didn't put aside X amount of dollars for vestibules, or like we did for the adult education thing?
We didn't, in the 2%.
In the 2%?
Yes.
It's in the 2%.
Not in the operating budget.
Okay.
Mrs. Castelli.
So I just want to confirm something. Mike, you said that the move, the adult ed move is not impacted by this coming budget, the one, the budget we're about to approve. But that's not correct, right? Because if we have to move December 2023, that's next year.
That's next year's, that's
That's this, the budget we're about to approve.
No.
23, 24.
We're in 22.
Yeah. This ends June 30, 23.
So the budget we're approving, though, is for September of 2022.
For July.
Till, till July of 2023.
July to June.
July?
July 1.
I can't stand this, it drives me nuts. So, so it's really, it's not, so next year, 2022 to
Five months before the move.
Five months before the move, okay.
We would pick this conversation back up next year at the same exact time.
Because it will affect the July 1, 2023
To June 2024.
To 30th of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
It falls within that window.
Okay.
So we'll talk about this again, at this time next year.
Yep, yep. It just, you know, this high, the fiscal year versus the school year always confuses the heck out of me.
Mrs. Regan.
I just want to, so we've already committed to those four additional
I just want to, so, we've already committed to those four additional. So we have to pay for that 23,000. And that is not in your budget right now.
So it's, it's not in my budget. However, as you'll always hear me say, my budget is very fluid. And since we created the budget, we probably have some student movement where the 23,000. I feel comfortable right now saying that 23,000 we can cover in the budget that we proposed.
We haven't approved the budget, so we haven't approved that money technically, right?
Correct. What I'm saying is.
We said we wanted to spend the 23,000, but we have not approved spending that money.
Correct, but I, but I guess, what I'm understanding, did I cut you off? I'm sorry. We, we had proposed a sustained services budget.
Right.
And we believe that, that it'll absorb it because of the, the fluid nature of the tuition accounts.
Mrs. Castelli?
That was another thing I wanted to speak about, the ECA. And whether we want to increase beyond the four. I have to tell you, I spoke with a bunch of constituents recently. And, you know, told them about, we're going to, we're bumping up the, you know, four more positions, but there's so many kids that really want to get in and we, you know, it's a budget issue. And they, the, the stories I heard about the, the wonderful program that is offered at ECA. And they said, and it doesn't even matter if they go on in the arts as, you know, as Rajah wanted to know about. Because they said they use those skills in so many other paths. Some of them have gone on to be lawyers and their acting skills have just really helped them out. But, you know, just, they, they say they, they, the skills that they learn there can be applied in multiple disciplines, not just the arts. So that was kind of educational for me to hear. And, you know, I just wanted to let everybody know that it apparently is a very, very excellent program.
I'm kind of stuck in the middle when it comes to ECA. I'm troubled by having 11 students who want to get into the program who can't. But I'm also troubled by having a balloon in one year, which if we go too high for the incoming freshman class next year, like if we go up to 10, then we're going to have 10, 5, 5, 3. Like it's not going to be equitable amongst all of the grade levels there. Unless we plan on doing 10, 10, 10, 10 eventually. So, it's a hard call because I, I don't like that waitlist at 11, but I don't want to see 15 freshmen in 5, 3 and 3. So it's, it's a very hard call. I think 11 is too high. I don't know what anybody else is comfortable with. I just.
Tammy, can you repeat that again?
Sure. On the top of the, the sheet, on the top table, the waitlist, it shows how many students have been waitlisted historically for the past several years. 11, 6, 5, 5. And then if you look in the middle table, it says for next year with the 2022, 2023, the acceptances. So we would have five in freshman class, five sophomores, three juniors and three seniors. So if we go higher, say we let, just say, I know we're not going to do this, but say we let all 11 in, then we'd have 16, 5, 3 and 3. So you're never going to have an equal number of opportunities for freshmen, sophomores, seniors, juniors this way. So what is the magic number that we take that 11 on the waitlist down to so that we try to establish equity amongst all the grades? That's just what I'm struggling with. I don't know a good answer. Well, you've been here longer than me, you should have that answer. Mr. Doring?
I think at this point, we just have so many moving pieces with the budget, everything that we've been discussing. So I think in terms of the ECA, we should probably just leave it where it is and not be adding any more for this year. Then we could obviously cycle back next year and then add some more spots to that point. But for this year, I wouldn't be comfortable increasing it further.
So you're good with 11 on the waitlist?
I mean, it's not, it's not the ideal, but I do like the idea of saying, let's see how this takes us this year. We really don't have much money to work with this year in the budget. So we've get, we've added those slots. Next year, knowing that there are going to be, you know, there's three. If there's more room for us to add a couple more slots and if that list continues to grow, I think we just have to, to watch it and, and go with that. I'm totally on board with what Mr. Deering said.
Yeah, it's far from ideal, but that might be our best option at this point.
Any other comments? Are we all in agreement to leave it at the, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
So knowing that we can move anything from contingency, if we approve this 499, 844 in the contingency line item, and we will move as needed for fuel costs, bus fuel, any other items. If, if the security grant is not enough when the RFPs come back or if what we have in our 2% fund isn't enough, we can move from that. Are there any other object code line items that people want to talk about on this sustained budget? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the budget?
So.
Now you got to make the motion, I didn't make it.
I moved that we approved the budget for the 2022, 23 school year.
I second. In the amount of 109,897,692. Okay, and I, I'll do a roll call for this one. Mrs. Castelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
Is that leaving everything where it is?
Yes.
The numbers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the budget for 2022, 2023 passes as presented. Okay. And with no other official business to come before the board this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.